We begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. O Lord, our God, You created us, and You created us in love and in the Spirit. Through Your words, that were recorded by our own fellow brothers and sisters, You show us how to live in connection, in relationship with You. We are gathered at this time, once again, to continue to talk about the word that they left with us. We ask you to open our minds and our hearts through the same Spirit that inspired the recording of these words. May the Spirit unlock the understanding and the mysteries and the meaning of these words to us at this time. May we receive Your word, understand them, and help us to also apply them in the practice of our daily lives. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So, we have been talking about the ministry of Jesus in the north, in Galilee, and you will come to find that the large part of Jesus' ministry was carried out in the north. A large part of His ministry. He went to the south maybe twice, and then the last time He went to the south, He went there to actually be arrested, and then went through the cross, and then died and rose from death. But teaching, and ministering, and healing, He did majority of these things in the north. We have talked about the fact that His ministry included teaching, preaching, and healing. Okay, teaching, preaching, and healing. And we have talked about some of His teachings. We talked about His idea about fasting, His idea about His teaching on the Sabbath, which is the foundation of everything that the Jewish community practices, is based on the idea of the Sabbath, the seventh day. And then we now are talking, since last week, last week we started talking about the healing of Jesus, the healing things that He did. And we talked about the fact that the healing included the healing of what we call evil. Actually, the healing ministry of Jesus was targeted at evil, driving away evil, okay? Solving the problem of evil. That is the healing that we are talking about. And evil was considered in many, many ways. Evil was considered in three different ways in those days. The first one is what we looked at last time. How Jesus heals evil in the way of an evil spirit or emotions, emotional problems, emotional and psychological problems. They were all considered evil in those days. If you had an emotional problem, it's like an imbalance of your normal self. An emotional problem is like an imbalance, like anxiety, like depression. They were all considered that it's an evil spirit that has attacked you. It's an evil spirit that has taken over yourself, so you are not yourself anymore. If you are afraid, excessively afraid, that's considered in the Old Testament, and I'm not saying now. And even in the New Testament. So, in the New Testament, inherited a lot of things, a lot of cultural perceptions from the Old Testament. So, right about Jesus' time, they were still thinking like that. It was Jesus' ministry. From Jesus' ministry, we come to see that some of these things are not really evil. Okay? So, as we go forward, this is how I want you to look at these things. That many of the things that the Bible considered, they talked to us about being evil, and Jesus healing those things. Those are not the ways we are supposed to be healing them today, in our world today. In our world today, thank God, God showed us many reasons, many different ways that we come to understand why those things happen. Now we know we have all the gadgets, we have all the knowledge, we know better than people who lived in those days. People who lived in those days had no stethoscopes, they had nothing, they could not do ultrasound, they could not do things like that, they could not see anything. These days, we even can operate without cutting people. In those days, if you have a mental problem, you're crazy. You have an evil spirit. And you are taken out of society. And so, the first one was the first evil that we saw was spirits and emotions, anxieties, and things like that. We talked about a devil that is working very hard and infecting people, demons, and Satan, who is the father and the origin of all these things. And the way that Jesus healed those things was through exorcism. Jesus exercises them. Okay? So, that's His healing of those things. We saw that last time. And now I want us to look at the other category of evil. The other category of evil that Jesus was healing in those days were viral illnesses, an illness that is caused by a virus. So, COVID. Already, right now, a lot of people are talking about COVID. COVID is a demon. There are a lot of people who are looking at COVID like that. A lot of people are thinking COVID is God punishing us, or something like that. Okay? But if you look at science, science can explain why we got this stuff going around. There are many other stuffs before that. There were other viruses that has attacked humanity. We have had pandemics again and again and again in our world. So, thank God, we are finding, we are finding, we studied it, and we are now solving that problem. Okay? And now we're going to live with COVID because we have, everybody will be inoculated. COVID becomes one of those illnesses like malaria or something like that. That's how it's going to be like. And it would have made human beings advance, would have advanced in our medicine, because we would have had medicine for COVID and other things. So, viral illnesses, and then fever, like your fever attacks you, headaches, and aches of all kinds, and pain, pain in your body, pain in some part of your body. Those things were all considered an evil spirit, or evil has attacked you. And therefore, Jesus heals those. The Bible tells us, Jesus goes to heal and casts them out, and touches people, and prays over them, and takes those away. Infectious diseases, infectious diseases as well, like AIDS, and all these infectious diseases that in our world, they were all considered as an imbalance, a challenge to the power of God. And so, they were considered, anything that is adversary. Remember when Satan, the word Satan or Satana means adversarial or adversary, an adversary of God, the opposite of God. So, anything that is evil is the opposite of God, and therefore is a challenge to God's power. And that is why Jesus heals that. Now, that is their perception in those in the Old Testament. Okay? And then, so, the next one is disability. The next category, like we say, is disability. If you have any disability, whether it is physical disability or mental disability, it is evil. Someone must have sinned. Either you have sinned, or your ancestors, and they believe that if your great-grandfather did something wrong, they can punish the grandchildren instead. That's what they believe. They believe that God visits punishment of the ancestors onto the current generation. So, sometimes you, when Jesus, there was one time, one of the stories, when the disciples and Jesus were walking, and they saw this blind man, the first question they asked was, "Who sinned?" Is it this one who sinned, or his ancestor, who's one of his family members who sinned? Okay? So, that's the first thing that went in their mind. They didn't ask any question at all. They knew that this is sinful and evil, and adversarial to God's power. So, I call it impairment. For now, we're calling it impairment, but disability, disability is something that we constructed. We make people disabled. But people have impairment, the use of their faculties, their mind, their hand, their feet, their eyes, eyes and nose, eyes, nose. Their nose, their ears. People, all of us have something. Okay? People can come out with anything, but those are what we call impairment. They are impaired of using some part of their bodies. Now, to call that disability is disability, what do you mean when you say disabled? Then you are talking about a normal thing that is able, that is able, something else that is the norm. And this person falls short of that, and so this person is disabled. Okay? So, disability is always in relation to what we have normalized as the normal way. And that causes other people to be disabled. Otherwise, they will just be full human beings, but with an impairment to some part of their body. Okay? And so, we're going to look at that later on, but for now, impairments, they saw impairments as disability, and in their time, that's even more. They went further to call impairments evil. It's a demon that is causing that. Okay? And paralysis, whether it's congenital or is, if you're paralyzed from birth, or whether you acquired it when you grew up, something happened and you're paralyzed, it is evil that has visited you. Blindness was considered, physical blindness was considered evil. The demon doing that. Death, and they can use their ears, their mouth, and their speech, impediments. Mental and neurological illnesses are all considered evil. Okay? So, in fact, I wanted to mention here too, that I forgot, but we will talk about death later on, when we talk about the suffering, the death, and the resurrection of Jesus. But death itself, physical death itself, was also considered a kind of punishment. Okay? And that is something, or let's say, when a person, let's say, elderly, growing elderly, and then the body deteriorating, the body losing its ability to do things, they consider that also as not so, they feel like God is not with them. Okay? And so, what we call today entropy, in anthropology, they call entropy, entropy is the natural deterioration of every human person. Human beings are not going to, you're not going to be forever. We are all going to, at some point, lose something, and continue losing. Some of us will lose a lot, some will lose just one, some might stay, might be sharp all the way to we check out, but all of us are going to be going, we're going to do that. So, that's our reality. That's the reality of the physical human being, human person. If we get that strongly in our minds, we'll be able to understand death and dying, the dying process. Okay? So, I want to establish right now, when Jesus heals, when we read the Bible about healing, the goal, why Jesus heals people, is one thing only. It is not to heal, to that they regain their health is not the goal. That they regain their health is not the goal for healing. The goal for healing people is to get to know Jesus and have a relationship with Jesus. That's the goal. The goal of Jesus' healing, when we finally interpret the story, we must arrive at a relationship with Jesus, a knowledge of Jesus, and a relationship with Jesus. That is the goal for healing, and therefore that will help us to translate or to interpret any story of healing, and to understand our own prayer for healing. When you're praying for healing, just what are you, look, are you asking? Just what do you think you are asking God to do for you? Is it only that you gain your health? Is it only that your foot get healed, that you don't feel pains anymore? Or it is something beyond that? That's what we have to, we have to always, but I want you to know that that is the goal. So, let's go on now. I just gave you this. I found this on the internet, and I thought it was very helpful, so I sent it to you. But you can find it in, I just want to give credit to it, so nobody comes up to me with copyright. But it's on the on the external domain, whatever they call it, that anybody can use it. So, you can find it in conformingtojesus.com. Okay? Conformingtojesus.com, and you'll find it there. And I think it's nicely done. They have pointed out the different places that Jesus healed somebody, Jesus' ministry in the different places in Israel. So, you can see that we are talking about the north, so you can see, we are talking about this area. This is, this area, Galilee, this is the Sea of Galilee, this is the area of the actions. You can see, you can see how many things that Jesus did over there in His ministry. All these are what He did. That's a lot. And in the south, just a little small, but comparable, but the north was a lot. Jesus largely worked in the north. Okay? So, let's go forward, and now, so since we have done the exorcism, we have talked about evil spirits. Now, let's talk about headaches, viral diseases, viral illnesses, how Jesus healed those. And we'll use an example of Peter's mother-in-law. Okay? Peter's mother-in-law had fever. She had fever, and fever can stand in for illnesses like fever, like headache, and pains, and ache. Oh, my back, oh, my this, oh, my that, and all that, that kind of ache, you know? Oh, I have a stomach flu. And so on. Or even cancer. Okay? I have cancer, I have diabetes, I have this, I have that, I have liver, liver. I almost said liver flu. Whether they have flu for liver, I don't know about that. But our bodies contract all these viruses, this alien, I don't mean alien, something from space, but something, something outside of us that attacks our body, that doesn't jive with our body. Or even substances, substances. Somebody, I might drink a whole glass of whiskey, and I'll be fine. Somebody drinks half of it, and they got to go to the hospital. Okay? So, so, our anatomy, individual anatomy, work differently. Some people can handle certain things, certain substances, certain food, some cannot handle certain food. So, we have to, we have to see the wonder of the differences of human anatomy in individual selves. Some die of cancer, some survive cancer for a long time. Some die of diabetes, some survive diabetic, be diabetic for the rest, whole of their life. They live to 100, things like that. So, all of that, if we lived in Jesus' time, it would have been evil. And like I'm saying, today, even today, those who translate the Bible, look at the Bible literally, in a fundamental way, in the evangelical fundamental way, they still consider some of these things as evil, which is, which is wrong. Okay? So, we're going to look at Peter's mother-in-law, and you know that story very well. Let me just narrate the story. You can find it in Mark chapter 1, verse 29 through 31. And you can see the same story reported by Luke and Matthew. They all have a version of the story. You might find some differences, but the gist of it is all preserved. It happened that Jesus went to Peter's home, and when they got there, He went there with His disciples. And when they got there, the Bible says that Peter's mother-in-law had fever, and they said, they reported it to Jesus. They reported the issue with Jesus. Now, if Jesus is God, Jesus should have known already without, you know, but the Bible says that the people told Jesus about her. And then Jesus went to her, and touched her, and lifted her up, and the fever left her. And then the Bible says she waited on them. She worked, she fed them, she cooked for them. Okay? So, that's a very beautiful story, a little short story. There's nothing, not too much, it doesn't say much, just the fact that that process was followed, that, that, that Jesus, they told Jesus, and Jesus healed her. And in other places, I have explained this to be the power of the community, the community interceded. And here, I want to say a few things about how Jesus heals. First of all, there's a need for faith. For Jesus to heal, Jesus always depends, or let me say, Jesus always tries to find faith. And why? Why does Jesus try to find faith? Because faith is the way that we receive, is the way we receive. If you don't have faith, you can't receive. If you don't have faith, it means you are closed. Faith is openness, expectation. You have room in yourself to receive what is coming, what Jesus is giving. What Jesus is giving can only be received by faith. Okay? Now, this faith can be the person's own faith, the person who is sick, the person's own faith, but also we have seen in several times, and especially in this case, we have seen that other people's faith can be used. Other people who are related to you, their faith can be used to heal you. See, that's very, very important, and I've had, and we practice that all the time. I've had people from the parish whose relatives are sick, and they want me to come pray with them, and pray over them, but the person, the person himself is not asking for that. There are family members who are asking for that. Okay? So, that's very important, that we can use our faith as down payment, or as a way of openness. Okay? So, faith is the condition for receiving healing. So, sometimes Jesus can heal, say, Jesus heals you, but because of a lack of faith, it's not being received, it's not being felt by the people, by the person. Okay? So, faith is very important in the healing. Then, we see Jesus healing by words. Sometimes He heals by words. He speaks, and says, "Be made whole, be made clean, be healed." Okay? Or He just commands, commands the spirit that is causing that disease to leave, like we see in exorcism. Okay? So, Jesus sometimes heals by just speaking. Remember the Roman centurion, the Roman soldier, whose child was sick at home, and he sent people to Jesus, and Jesus says, "Okay, okay, I'm coming to touch him, I'm coming to heal your son." And he says, "Oh, no, Lord, I am not worthy that you should come to my home, but speak the word, just speak, and my servant will be well again." And my soul, we say, "My soul shall be healed," but that's where it comes from. Remember, in the communion, that's what we say. We say, "Lord, I am not worthy that you should enter under my roof, but only say the word, only the word, and I will be okay." That's, that's a profession of faith. Okay? The guy believed Jesus so much that he says, "I don't need your physical presence. I know you are a spirit. I know you have power over spirits. So, wherever you are, just say it." That's a faith in Jesus. Is that the person is open, is ready, is ready to receive it. He can handle the healing of Jesus. So, then it happens for them. Okay? So, then, then we see also, sometimes Jesus heals these diseases. Jesus heals them by action, some kind of ritual. Jesus makes some kind of ritual. Sometimes Jesus touches them. Sometimes the people themselves touch Jesus. Remember the woman who was hemorrhaging, and she broke through the crowds, and only touched, touched the hem of Jesus' clothing, and she felt healed. So, sometimes touch is very, is very important. Jesus heals by touch, touching the people, sometimes lifting them up by the hand. Sometimes Jesus performs even some kind of ritual, something that we will call diabolic today, if that happens today, we will call diabolic, but that is sacramental. Jesus performs a sacrament, like we use oil, or we use water, or just yesterday, we use ashes. We impose ashes on people's forehead. There was a story, there's a story of Jesus healing someone when He made a spat on the ground, and made the saliva mixed with mud, and then smeared it in the eyes, on the eyes of the blind person, to heal the blind person. Okay? So, you see that again and again and again, Jesus healing people by performing some ritual. And many times, sometimes we hear Jesus say, after healing the person, He says, "Your faith has saved you. Your faith has saved you." Okay? After healing people. So, this goes back to what we said at the beginning, that faith is a precondition for receiving healing. And then, the result, after healing, the result of the healing the result of the healing always is, we see the people praising God. The people praising God, but praise, to praise God, that's not mean standing in the street corner and shouting hallelujah, no. Uh, it's, it's actually using your, the new thing that you think you got from, from Jesus. Flouting it out, show bolt it, show it to people, uh. So if you have gotten ice, you go about, you go about looking at new things and, and praise, praising God, showing yourself, uh, uh, by praising God. If, if, like Peter's mother-in-law, naturally, she would have cooked for them right from the beginning. She would have even had food ready for them when they got in the house. But they told us that Peter's mother-in-law was sick with a fever. So Jesus, I think I would have done the same thing too. Because I want food to eat, I'm gonna heal that woman quickly, so she can, she can, she can, she can give us some food, okay? So, um, uh, when Jesus healed her, she praised God by, by putting her health to good use, her good health to good use, by, by, by serving them. So we see people using the new strength that they have gotten by praising God, by, by telling about Jesus. And sometimes Jesus even warns them, don't tell anyone. And yes, the Bible says that the more he tells them, don't tell anyone, the more they go out flouting, because you cannot just start doing, praising the one who has helped you, uh, eh, that way, okay? So, um, so that is what we see, uh, um, there is, there is something I wanna say about when Jesus tells them, don't tell anyone. Why does he tell them, don't tell anyone? That is the way to, to, uh, uh, the, the problem is that people will, did not know who Jesus is, okay? And Jesus, or the Bible, those who wrote the stories, they believe that the people will be attached to Jesus as the miracle worker, this great man and everything. He can do no, he can be no weak, he cannot be a weak person, he can't. They will be so, they will be so, um, attached to the great things that are happening, so much so that when the time comes, when he is arrested and, and, and hanged on the cross, they will lose their faith. They will be so attached to the Jesus who commands, who heals, who does all things. So they will not, so they don't understand, they will not understand who the Messiah is. So Jesus asked them not to tell anyone. And the reason, eh, and, and what he intends that they do is that, don't tell anyone until I have gone through the passion and the suffering on the cross and rose from the dead. That's when you can tell people about the Messiah, who is powerful over everything, okay? So that is what is called, it's called the messianic secret in the Bible, okay? Now, uh, so let us look at the, uh, the other category of, of evil that, that is in the Bible. That is, uh, what we call today disabilities, but they are, they are impairments, eh? Impairments to the body, to, to our physical natural selves, okay? So you have paralysis, eh? Jesus healed the paralytic, the paralytic, uh, in Mark, chapter two, verse one through twelve, in Luke, chapter five, verse seventeen through twenty-six. By the way, I want you to know that the, the things that I talked about, how Jesus heals people, applies to this one too. This is the way Jesus, that's the way Jesus heals, uh, uh, disabilities too. So the healing of the paralytic, for instance, they, they cut the roof open and they dropped the man in front of Jesus, okay? Uh, but that is their faith, so they already have faith. It's the faith of those people that made Jesus heal the paralytic, okay? So, so you will see that. And then, uh, the healing of the man with the withered hand, eh? The man whose hand was withered, that's a disability, that's, that, eh, an impairment, eh? Uh, more than likely, he was born with that. He was born, his hand was, uh, was, was, was withered. And I told you something about eh, eh, the fact that eh, even in Africa, eh, in some parts of Africa, that these children who were born, who could not stand up, uh, uh, who, 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 whose limbs are so weak and small and, and sometimes coiled underneath them, they cannot stand up. They cannot stand straight, they stay on the ground and, and they end up becoming beggars. These, these, these people are sometimes abandoned. And the Africans, many African traditions, like I told you some time ago, African traditions are not far from Hebrew, the Israelite tradition, traditional beliefs. They believe that children who cannot, like, they call some of them snakes and they call them all kinds of names, okay? Uh, uh, children who have Down syndrome, for instance, uh, are considered uh, the babies of the river queen. So if a baby is born, some, since some, some, some of the traditions, if a baby is born that, that, that has Down syndrome, eh, they, they have to be thrown back into the river. Uh, 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 or they will say, oh, eh, eh, when the woman was pregnant, she ate fish from that river. And she ate, she ate the babies of that, the queen of that, of that river, that goddess of that river. So the baby has to be returned to that river. There are stories where, uh, children were abandoned in the forest. Children who were born, who, who, who are, who have disabilities, were abandoned in the forest. This is not, that, this is not peculiar to, eh, Africa only, eh, it was in the Bible. The biblical, they considered things like that as evil, things like that as, as, as things that if you don't, don't exorcise, then you don't have to have anything to do with that, okay? So, uh, but I'm talking about traditional, uh, uh, things. But people, pe- a lot of people don't believe these things anymore, okay? So, um, but the, the, the reaction to people with disability in Africa is still not, has not progressed so much. You can see almost all poor people in the cities begging for money. Almost all of them are disable, eh, uh, with disabilities, okay? In the Western world, we have done better, uh, uh, but we have not totally, uh, gone over, but we, we are better, eh, people in the West are better. They're, eh, in Africa, for instance, nobody's gonna build a church with a handicap ramp, no way. First of all, they'll tell you they have no money to, to build that, okay? Um, and, and so there are no access. Eh, it's a way to tell people with disabilities, you are not welcome here, okay? Uh, so, okay. So, uh, the healing, the withered ma- uh, with, man with a withered hand is one example of impairment. And then you have the healing, uh, blindness. So you see the healing of the blind man, you have various versions of blind people who were healed by Jesus in the Bible. The, the most important one that we were going to read in our, our mass to help our baptismal candidate, eh, eh, people preparing for baptism, is the healing that is recorded in John, chapter nine, verse one through forty-one. Uh, the healing of the blind man, uh, uh, the man born blind, okay? He was born blind from, he was born, uh, uh, like that, you couldn't see. And then there's another story, oh, sorry, uh, there is another story called the Blind Bartimaeus. Bartimaeus, eh, that story is covered in Matthew and Mark. Okay, you see those stories over there. And, and, and I think in Luke also. Then you have the, uh, another story called the Blind Man at Betsider. This is the man, uh, this is the story that I was telling you about, that Jesus, uh, spat. This one says Jesus spat on his face, on his eyes. And then he asked him, so, so this is very dramatic. First, Jesus spat on his eyes, or in the other, uh, books, he made saliva with, mixed saliva with dirt and put it on his eyes. And then he asked him, can you see anything? And the man said, yeah, I see people, but, eh, people, but they look like trees walking. And the Bible said, Jesus touched him again and then he could see clearly, okay? So it was like stages, Jesus was like, healing the man in stages, okay?
I heard you have a question on that topic.
Yeah. Why did Jesus use saliva and dirt to make mud to place on the blind man's eyes? Wouldn't his saliva be sufficient? Was the mud meaningful to his followers? Those healed telling everyone may also have history, they are arrested and crucified. Okay, now, um, Mark, this very story says he spat on his face, okay? Only the saliva. But I think it's in Luke or one, or Matthew, one of those, that says that he mixed it with mud. But you know, in those days, they did things like that. They will, they will do something, something sacramental, okay? Eh, something tangible, because human beings sometimes respond to sacraments. Uh, they're like, eh, Father, eh, you can say the prayer, but I want some, some, an oil. I know, I want some anointing, okay? I want, I wanna eat the bread, I wanna drink the wine, I wanna do, those are sacramental things, okay? And, and, and so, the mud, eh, could symbolize, the mud could symbolize the fact of the person's nature, eh, the nature of the person. You, you remember, we always say, uh, you are dirt or you are ashes and to ashes you shall return. You remember the story in Genesis? In Genesis, it says, God molded soil. And then God breathed into the soil and the soil became a human soul. So it looks like Jesus was recreating this man, okay? It's like recreating the man. So he's used dirt again and then his own saliva will symbolize his own spirit, eh? Mixed with this and, and touches the man. So that's an explanation of, of why Jesus will use something like that, something sacramental, something that they can relate with, okay? Okay, so those are these disabilities. And then you have other stories I talk about, someone could not speak, someone is, uh, uh, mute and, uh, mute and deaf. Jesus was healing all of them. Uh, one time he touched the guy's ears and says, fatah. Remember, we just read it, uh, three, three days ago, I think. He, he touched the man's eye, eh, ears and says, fatah, which means be opened. And we use that formula when we baptize children. When we baptize them, we, we, we do a sign on their eyes, their mouth and their ears. And we say, fatah, be open, eh? We mentioned that word, eh, eh, so, so, eh, this is the way Jesus was healing people. Now, these are the understanding of all the disabilities, okay? All the disabilities in the Bible, eh, in the New Testament especially. The New Testament inherited the Old Testament perceptions, understanding. So the people in Jesus's time, they still thought about disabilities, the way the Old Testament thinks about disability. And so they look at miracle, you, the, the, those stories are miraculous healing stories. The, the, the healing are all miracles, it's a supernatural. They think about these things as supernatural things, okay? Uh, fever, whatever, anything like that, any sickness, any illness and any disability is, is a supernatural thing, it's not a natural thing. And, and they are harmful or supportive, those perceptions, the way they think about it, sometimes those, how, they are harmful perceptions and sometimes they are supportive perceptions. There are created attitudes of inclusion and exclusion. So sometimes these things make them include people and exclude people from their society, okay? So disabilities are looked at like that. And then, eh, there is always a passive and pitiful, eh, eh, people with disability were looked at in a passive way, they were looked at as passive and pitiful objects of redemptive forces. You need a supernatural force to help this person. And they are, they are, they are pitiful people, they are pitied all the time by the people. They're like, oh, oh, poor, the poor, what, what a, they were considered part of the poor. And poor, rejected, ostracized of society, okay? You will see that in some of those texts I've given you. They were pers- persons with disability are seen as unworthy, they have no rights, no rights like anybody else. Uh, they have no rights to mingle with society. They are the opposite of Jesus's power, that's the way they were seen. And then, uh, eh, they connected disabilities to sin. I've said that already, okay? So after, that's why after healing, Jesus will normally say, go and sin no more. Jesus will say, go and sin no more, which means a sin, I mean, the, the disability was caused by sin, okay? Alright. So, uh, those are some of the texts for that. And then disability was linked to demons, eh, the work of demons and the work of evil spirits, as I've said already. So all these things are the perceb- it's important for us to have that background when we are reading these things, in that time, how they were thinking. And that will make you understand some of the stories that you read. So, and some of the words that were used. Don't go, oh my God, why, why could they think like that? No, this is, this is the culture at that time, eh? Culture is the way you interpret things, the way you understand things that you see outside. That's culture, it is, it is trained, people were raised to see things like that. People were raised to see a black person or a white person or a blue person or green person and to understand exactly what they mean. The meanings were, 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 people were raised with, that is what culture does. So, uh, Jesus always says, your faith has saved you. Uh, uh, it's, this particular thing is like in African cultures too. Uh, 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 African traditional cultures. I wanna always say that, traditional cultures, because there are many places in Africa that don't follow those traditions anymore. And then, uh, so, let me see, uh, okay. So how should we interpret disability for our world today, for us, when you're reading that? You should always have in your mind, Genesis, chapter one, verse twenty-six through twenty-seven. That God created human beings in God's image and likeness, yeah? Well, human beings look like God, they are not God, but they look like God, likeness, eh, the image. Eh, so, eh, that's what that means, eh, human beings look like God, okay? And if they look like God, in some place also it says, God created a male and female, eh? Fi- male and female, God created them, okay? So God, so God looks like a female too, okay? God does look like male only, God looks like a female too. As to why we call God Father and, eh, eh, male has been used, eh, some, eh, white, eh, eh, white old male with a lot of gray hair and long white beard to be God, which we see in the movie, those are just movies. That's not, that's not, that's not how God looks, or God looks much more than that, okay? But this, what we call imago Dei, image of God, eh? The imago Dei should always be at the back of our minds. Human, to be human is to look like God. And Saint Augustine tells us later on, Saint, eh, after Genesis, Saint Augustine was the one who taught us how to, how to understand God as a community. God is not just, God is a community, a community, people together. Because God, Saint Augustine taught us about the Trinity, okay? And the Trinity is, is one God, is God, but there are different ways that God reaches out to us, okay? So, so if God, eh, if that, if God is a Trinity, is a community of persons, so so if God i if that if God is a Trinity is a community of persons then the human being is a community too because the human being has the human being looks like God so the human being is a community if that is the case then a human being interacts because the Trinity God the Creator God the Redeemer God the Sanctifier uh the Father which we call Father Son and Holy Spirit the the male perspective has given us Father Son Holy Spirit but essentially what that means is God the Creator God the Redeemer Jesus Christ and God the Sanctifier the one who makes us holy they communicate among themselves there's a community they are a community they communicate they are related to each other and they are related to each other so strongly that uh 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 they are one okay so every human being is like that every human being is a community that 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 every human being cannot be cannot live on their own that's why there's this saying that says uh no man is an island how many of you have heard that before no man is an island no one no one in this world lives alone entirely I mean you are living in your house alone doesn't mean you are living alone you live in a country and you depend on country so so every human being depends on other people we all depend on somebody some some nation we depend on somebody for something if you have everything you can have everything you will still depend on somebody if you go to the post office it might be maybe the post office you might need something you can't do that by yourself you need to go to the post office you can you can you can you you need to go to church uh that's why uh the the ministers and Father Kwame and all other people who also help you through that you depend on on your uh for those of you who lived you depend on your spouse you depend on your family relatives you will depend on a friend you depend on the president you depend on 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 your your congressman your woman you depend on all kinds of things there's no way anybody can say I am or I live only by myself even those who run away they fall off the grid the national grid electricity and all that and they go live in the forest I can say that uh if if the forests were not preserved they may be eaten by some lion or something they go to the town sometimes to buy things and then go and then go back into the i into the forest okay so they do depends on somebody so the human being that that's that's how we live as a community that's how we live and for that reason impairment makes people with disability people with disability depend on other people remember that they depend on if the person cannot walk if he has a disability of the legs cannot walk the person depends on somebody else but that why is that considered uh unusual why do we consider that as disabled it is human to depend on somebody except that his disability his disability has made him to depend on somebody to be mobile but all of us also depend on some other people for certain things we could not do for ourselves so what we are talking about here is nature gives us impairment nature impairment is natural disability is what we cause we the society the society comes and says oh this one is abnormal it's a society that makes impairment to be disable disabled it's not it's not that the person is disabled the person is never disabled because people with disability are the ones who actually teach us what it looks like to be a human being to be a human being is to have impairment because we depend on somebody and that is the way we should begin to look at disabilities don't look at them as a pedophile they they are oh my god oh they are uh this is so we should work our way to embrace we should work society in such a way that they can participate in it I was like last time uh uh one of the one of the masses I celebrated here before I came to uh to Saint Saint Charles they uh Matthew was going to read uh was it Matthew Matthew uh uh one of our parishioner uh who who was in the Matthew yeah Matthew was going to read and they brought they brought him the microphone he doesn't have to go up there climb all that thing he's in a wheelchair but being in a wheelchair should not deprive him from being a lecturer from participating in it so if he cannot go to the Ambo well the Ambo has to come to him so some we should arrange our lives our society in such a way that those people are not disabled the way we arrange our society makes those people disabled but all that is happening to them is is the impair the the impairment is a natural thing okay and all of us have some kind of impairment because all of us depend on somebody to make up for some of the needs that we have in our lives so that's that's the things that I want you to consider so all human beings lack something and are limited and are limited and persons with disability teach us how to be fully human to be fully human is to have a limitation theirs is their bodies mine might be I can I really can uh maybe I can uh uh I can cook I need somebody I need somebody to cook uh or maybe if I can cook I can just fry water or I can just boil rice okay but I need somebody to cook my favorite food for me I don't know how to cook my favorite food so and we can go go i if I if we could if we could share you can all say something about this okay so then uh uh so this is like race like racism like race persons with disability have a right to our outreach not as pitiful people not to infantilize 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 them not to make them like children you know black people were considered like children even grown men in the time of slavery they were considered like grown men like they call them hey boy hey boy you know that kind of thing was like infantilizing people that's what is done with people with disability in our world today they were considered they can't help themselves they gotta be helped they gotta be carried uh left and right and all that so they were considered infants okay but that infantilizing way uh but as a way for others to realize we should consider them the way for others to realize ourselves as human beings they are opportunity for us when we see people like that when we have people like that in our families in our societies in our churches we should consider that it's a blessing for us to try to see ourselves our humanness to see that to be human is to have a limitation and to see how we too can easily accept help from other people and and treat them as one of us ourselves so this is this is uh uh the way we should interpret uh disability in our world and then so what should we do in the church uh uh these are some of the things that came out of uh 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 a thesis that I wrote for my degree in Boston College so these are the things that I suggested for the church in Ghana so but I think it's for the the whole church the first thing is to locate the problem of disability in the church itself not the people don't call the people disabled you know who is disabled is the church is the way we think our way of thinking is disabled is limited we don't think wide enough we don't think wide enough to include people who cannot use their hands who cannot use their legs who cannot use their mind who cannot use we don't our our church is so limited our thought is so limited we only have people who think that they can do uh certain things for themselves our church should be able to include those people so it's the church that is disabled the title to my thesis was the disabled church the disabled church so the problem is not for the people who are uh who have impairment the problem is for us who create them into this disabled people the second thing is from the Second Vatican Council uh uh which called the church the people of God the church is the people of God so the Second Vatican Council looks at the church as the community not the priest not the pope not the bishop but it's the it's a community together if we think about that then then we will be thinking about embracing everybody in the church then the third thing is that uh we we teach we try to develop a theology of disability we should look at disability as a theological not we should we should discuss this as a matter of uh uh see the way God sees it okay that's the theology of disability in faith formation we should discuss this with our young believers our catechism our children has to be has to learn from day one from the first grade or pre-k faith formation should already start with this new culture looking at human being as someone who has limitations and that people who have severe limitations do does not make them less human beings but that they are just a degree of limitations but that they have limitations too and then uh educate the educators uh educate the educators are uh I'm talking about people the priests the teachers the catechists and people who go to a seminary that we have to teach that also in the seminaries in many seminaries there's nothing like the theology of disability there's nothing like that okay we know the seminaries don't have that they have to go to you have to finish seminary and go to graduate school before you start doing something outside the box okay then the last thing is make the church structures accessible church structures must a church is not fully a church building a good church building is not a fully a good church building unless there are sit is arranged in such a way that somebody in a wheelchair can fit in there can get can walk in there uh someone who who is has some kind of condition can still be admitted there that's those are some of the things that 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 we have to take from our study of Jesus's healing okay one more question and then we go so go and sin no more said by Jesus seems to confirm what people said that a man's blindness was caused by his grandfather's sin yes yes and there's certain things about that uh when I studied the theology of disability that's one of the things that let's just consider this can you can you imagine someone sitting in the church who is blind a blind person sitting physically blind sitting in the church can you imagine what the person is feeling when we are talking about somebody uh uh blind and that person is a sinful person because he's blind can you imagine how those people will be feeling that's 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 what tells us right away that it doesn't mean that today physical blindness is not the same in the Bible the Bible's blind to be blind in the Bible in our day today you know what that means it means non believing belief uh to have faith to believe is to 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 have eyesight you remember it we're going to read um when we read that text from the blind man uh blind who when Jesus opened the eyes the Pharisees the Pharisees were were annoyed and they were like no 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 the Pharisees told Jesus hey uh we are not blind and Jesus says if you were blind you will have no sin but now you say we see so your blindness remain now you say we see so your your sin he says your sin remains if you were blind okay so Jesus turned it around if you were blind you will have no sin but now you are claiming that we can see so your sin remains that's that's why we read that text for those who are going to be baptized we read that for them to know to have faith in Jesus to believe in Jesus because not knowing Jesus not believing in Jesus is blindness for our time today so all those things need to be interpreted uh into it's a spiritual thing no more physical no more physical eyesight and that's not what they mean they mean spiritual things in our world okay so next week next Thursday we are going to start the sermon on the mount this is my favorite 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 part because it's this is the constitution of Christianity we're going to compare the sermon on the mount with the US Constitution have of that okay so uh God bless all of you and I hope your Lent has begun well may God bless you to live a fruitful Lenten season in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit amen